We should be ready to go, so I'm gonna call the meeting to order. This is the regular city council meeting for Minutrista of August 21st, eclipse day. So, first order, I'd like to ask that you join me in pledge of allegiance to the flag.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, welcome, everyone. We don't have a big audience here this evening, but I'm sure some of you will be watching on YouTube, and just a reminder for all of us, turn off our electronic devices, or put them on silent or airplane mode. And first, I'm gonna start by introductions, and I'm gonna start on the opposite end this time, kinda to change it up a little bit. So we're gonna start with our chief of police this time. He is going to his seat, thank you very much. Our chief of police, Paul Falls, and next to him, in the pink shirt, we have our city attorney, Ron Beatty, with Kennedy and Graven. David Abel is our community development director, and he's on vacation today, so he is not with us. But then we have Brian Grimm, who is our finance director, and then Mike Barone, who is our city administrator. I'm Lisa Whalen, I'm the mayor, and then to my left, our council members, Pam Mortenson, Mike Maliter, Shannon Bruce, and then our city engineer with WSB is Paul Hornby, and then on the end, we have our public works director, Gary Peters, and then our HR communications coordinator, Cassandra Taber. So with that, next is approval of our agenda. Are there any changes or additions to the agenda? If not, then approving the agenda as presented, is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion has been made by Ms. Mortenson, and seconded by Mr. Maliter, to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Next, we have special presentations, however, we have none this evening. In persons to be heard, we have nobody signed up, so we'll move on to consent agenda items. There's just one very, very quick clarification for the budget amendment. It said that in the staff report, that the money was going to be moved from the general fund to the water fund. It's actually from the water fund to the general fund. It is correct in the resolution itself, just I wanna make it clear that under the staff report, it just was turned around, so I'm not gonna pull that. And then also, Mr. Peters was present at a regular meeting of August 7th, just add that to the minutes. With that, we have consent agenda items, approve our work session meeting minutes from August 7th, 2017, approve our regular meeting minutes from August 7th, 2017, approve our claims, and D is a resolution to approve our budget amendments and clarifications, and E is a resolution to approve the election equipment lease with West Tonka School District, number 277, and F is a resolution to approve our escrow and dispersing agreement for Woodland Cove Lake second edition. Is there a motion to approve A, B, C, D, E, and F of consent agenda items?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion has been made by Ms. Bruce, and seconded by Ms. Mortenson. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. We have no public hearings this evening, so we'll move along to our business items. Our first is approving a quote to replace our playground equipment in Douglas Park. I know we talked about this last time. Mr. Peters, I think that's you again.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Council, this is on me. I received bids earlier, and noticed during the process that there was no drainage rock into it, and they resent bids that included drainage rock, and when I sent the stuff to David, I mistakenly sent him the first set of quotes instead of the second set of quotes. I included the P rock, so it did raise the price slightly. I believe it was like $3,500, which included all the P rock underneath the rubber mulch, and then another later GeoFabric, the P rock underneath there is used for drainage, otherwise the water's just gonna sit in there so we can get it to slope away. So I did increase the price of the playground by $3,500 from Minnesota, Wisconsin, playground was still cheaper at $31,153.88, still under the budget amount of $35,000, so we're just asking that approve the quote this time with the right numbers.
All right, thank you. Any questions, Council? Okay, then I'm looking for a motion to adopt a resolution approving a quote from Minnesota, Wisconsin playground in the amount of $31,153.88.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion has been made by Ms. Mortenson, and seconded by Mr. Maliter. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes 5-0.
The mayor, Council, we could've done this a different way, but we chose not to. We wanted to be as transparent as we possibly could, so even though Mr. Peters had to come with his hat in his hand a little tonight, it was better, I think, to use the correct quotes instead of doing a change order or something similar. We wanna be, like I said, very transparent what we do, it's still under the budget, so budget amount we're prepared about, so better do it this way than to just try to slide a change order through in the future, so.
All right.
Thank you for taking that approach. Just, Mayor, it was four of us.
I'm sorry, I keep saying 5-0, you're correct, thank you for, it's four of us. We have, Ms. Stoll is absent this evening, I, yes, thank you. It's habit, so, thank you. Next, we have acceptance bids and award the contract for Enchanted Lane and Tuxedo Road improvements. Mr. Hornby?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the Council. We did open bids for the 2017 Enchanted Lane and Tuxedo Road Improvement Project, which also includes the Grandview Avenue improvements. And this is part of the 2017 roadway maintenance improvements. The improvements include the bituminous reclamation of the entire roadway width to varying depths for all the roads. Grandview Avenue would be widened two feet, and that was part of an agreement through the Red Oak Development, and paving a new bituminous base and workhorse, adjustment of castings for manholes and gate valves if we have them, and then replacement of culverts, mostly on Enchanted Lane is where we're doing those. Some of the additional improvements is just degrading the roadway to direct drainage, and then also to try to reduce some of the seasonal flooding. This was not intended to eliminate flooding that we had in 2014, but was, as Council knows, stemmed by that project, by that incident. We did receive four bids. They ranged in price from $693,845.69 as the low bid, to $942,315 was the highest bid. The engineer's opinion of construction cost was $650,000. The bids came in a little higher than the engineers anticipated. The lowest response a bid received was from Valley Paving, they're out of shot, and their low bid was $693,845.69. We did go through and take a look at the as-bid results based, as compared to feasibility with the construction costs. The feasibility report was $731,040 estimated, and that would include Enchanted Lane, Tuxedo Road, and Grandview Avenue. And then for as-bid would be the $693,845.69, that was the low bid from Valley Paving. Should also be noted that the developer for Red Oak contributes $35,000 toward the project costs for Grandview Avenue. If Council does want to award this project, staff does recommend approving the resolution or packet accepting bids and awarding the Enchanted Lane, Tuxedo Road, street improvement project, and Grandview Avenue improvements to Valley Paving for their low bid of $693,845.69.
Any questions?
I have one question, Paul. And looking at the summary here, you've got the four bullet points, and I just wanted to follow up on our conversations. For Grandview, obviously, we can't do curb for the entire section because of runoff and stormwater and such, but I believe we're adding some curb, correct? Is that?
Correct, and I apologize, I didn't mention that during the presentation of the memo, but we did take a look at the, Councilmember Maliter asked that we look at adding curb to Grandview Avenue, we did, and then what ends up happening with that is that we ended up having to expand the existing stormwater facilities, and then also extend storms to pick up the additional water. And it looked like we go beyond the scope of what the Council had presented, and so we eliminated that curb in its entirety, except there will be some curb along Grandview Avenue in areas where we have a situation where a hill comes down and reduces the amount of, you know, keeps the project within the right-of-way, those types of situations. Also, we have one resident who has complained about getting water in his garage that comes off the roadway, so we're gonna put a curb beyond, past the driveway to keep that in the road.
To direct it.
To direct it, away from, yes.
So you have curbing where need be for directional runoff, or if you will.
That's concrete, not?
It's concrete, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I know we had wanted to look at that, but the cost and everything, I think, was a little more than we would want.
And one of the other things it would also do is send us into a different permitting process.
Sure.
Through the Watershed District, and which would delay the project, but the main thing was the cost and the expansion of the pond, which wasn't intended, I think, when it was brought up.
Wasn't there some other shoreline restoration on Enchanted that needed to be pulled out that would've potentially delayed the process through permitting?
Yes, and thanks, Brian, for mentioning that as well. I know I talked to a few, a couple of councilmembers maybe about that, but the shoreline, we were looking at providing some shoreline protection along just where
By the boat launch.
Tuxedo Road meets the bridge, so between the bridge and the boat launch. There had been some erosion there in 2014. It seems to be stable right now, but in order to permit that, we're looking at a substantial time for permitting. So we looked at the agencies, the Corps of Engineers, DNR, and the Watershed District, as far, and also with the floodplain impacts with restoring that shoreline, that perhaps if that is done, it'd be a separate project than this reclamation project.
And this wasn't gonna, this was gonna be paid, that portion of the project was gonna be paid out of our stormwater funds?
Correct.
Regardless of how or when it's done? And there's no, and there's no, if you will, economy of scale or cost savings to do it now versus maybe at a later date?
Yeah, I don't think so, because it's a different operation of doing that repair.
Okay.
Likely it'd be barge work.
Oh, okay, okay. That was one of my questions, because I understand the count, all the things you're bringing up here, but if we were to, it would be preferable not to bring a lot of truck traffic over a newly paved road, so if we could do it with a barge.
Right, right. I think, in most instances where we've seen this on the lake, especially with the drop between the elevation of the road and where the water is, it'd be better to attack that from the barge.
Okay.
Wasn't there just like grant money, or relief money from the 14, like FEMA money available for that?
There, I think at that time, it was gonna be difficult to show what the damage was. I don't think that staff realized what the damage was until the water level went down. The water level had, the water line had been closed in there before, but there had, thought is that that part had been, had received some erosion from the wind and the wave action. I think that it's, even now, it's gonna be difficult to show it as a restoring, as far as reclaiming shoreline, which is what my initial intent was, is to reclaim it, show it on air photo, but that became, started to become a larger task than what I think we intended to do with the project.
Okay, good.
Yeah, I'm just a little bit concerned that we're, we may run the risk of putting the road in jeopardy, why not, you know, for future flood events.
Yeah, one of the concerns we had from the road standpoint more is maybe not the loss of the road, but vehicles going off the road there, and so we added, and this was in part of the, and the preliminary cost was added guard rail.
Oh, there is a guard rail.
Along that section, basically from the bridge down.
Almost to the?
I can't remember how far down, but it went almost that whole length there.
Okay.
Until we, until the grain dropped off, yes.
So cars would have to go through the guard rail before they get into the, yeah, and that's a good point, right?
Yes, one other thing perhaps that was added to this, was the request of Public Works due to the damage to the boat launch in the parking area for the boat launch with the Met Council, was repaving of the boat launch, so we did include that in this bid as well.
Okay.
That's similar work.
And then I, were you done? Do you have any other questions?
Yeah.
I just have a question. Valley paving, good company, have you dealt with them? I know we've had some working in our city last year that we were not very happy with.
Yeah, Valley paving.
Don't wanna end up in that situation again.
Valley paving's been around for quite some time. I actually just finished a project with them over 2014 and 15 in another city. You know, they've been bidding a lot of work lately in the area. You know, they're a good, long-term contractor.
Okay.
Specialized in, mainly in bituminous and grading, so.
And then, just one question, we were talking about shoulders out there, and people didn't want the gravel, what did you end up with?
No gravel.
Okay.
No gravel shoulders.
I think that's what they wanted to see, to keep it more, yeah, okay. All right. Any other questions? Otherwise, I'm looking for a motion to, let's see, accept bids and award the contract for the Enchanted Lane, Tuxedo Road, and Grandview Avenue Improvement Projects to Valley Paving Incorporated in the amount not to exceed $693,845.69.
So moved.
Is there a second? Hold on, I've got a motion on the floor, so let me get a second. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded, so Mr. Maliter made the motion, Ms. Mortenson seconded. Mr. Hornby?
Just so, Mayor and members of the Council, so you know, this is a unit price project, and so it's based on estimated quantities, so the, so being at this unit price, they're only paid for what work they do.
Okay.
So sometimes it can run over, unders, with the estimated, we typically try to be conservative with the quantity, so it comes in under budget, just, but just so you know, they get paid for the work that is performed. So it's not necessarily not to exceed.
Okay, I'm sorry. And with that, I've already talked to staff about bringing back, maybe at our next work session, talking about change orders, so we are gonna be talking about that, so we don't get large change order surprises. So, so let me ask you, let me ask the motion maker, can we approve, or can you modify your motion to say awarding the bid to Valley Paving in the amount of $693,845? They'd have to come back anyway if it's gonna be a fairly significant change order.
Or if we have a change order, we'll bring that back to Council. Oftentimes, what we'll do, just to get on, not to go off on a tangent, but if it's something that's large, oftentimes, there's a lot of small things that come up that we either use our, staff uses it at our discretion that it needs to be done, and either if we have to bring a small change order back, oftentimes, it'll delay a project.
Right.
So we try to use our discretion.
And that's what we're gonna be talking about, too.
Right, and so when you come back with some of the larger ones, that's, I know that's where some of the conversation arose before, with some of the larger change orders, so what we're trying to do is draw balance between what delays the project, so you can get it completed in timely fashion, and whether it's needed, or, you know, obviously, not just adding it to, adding an item to increase the cost of the project, or because somebody thought it'd be a good idea to add something, and it's more what's needed to get the project done.
Right.
That can be another conversation.
Okay, right. So we, we'll just change it to say $693,845.69 versus not to exceed?
It's not not to exceed, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
It's a unit cost.
It's a unit cost, right.
I think if we, as it's stated in our packet, is probably the correct way to do that, is, you know.
Okay.
So, I guess, to the extent that I will modify the motion to reflect how it's worded exactly in our packet.
Okay, is that okay with a second?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion, questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes 4-0. And yeah, we'll have that discussion coming up, because we have these projects going on, so we wanna talk about that sooner than later. So, accept professional services agreement for Enchanted Lane, Tuxedo Road, and Grandview Avenue for the construction engineering services.
Mayor, members of the Council, when we, oftentimes, I like to come through if a project is straightforward, and provide you professional services agreement for the feasibility report design and construction services. I think on this project, it wasn't identified that it was definitely gonna go or not go, and so we did not do that, we provided services for the feasibility report and for the design. So with the project being bid, we thought as prudent to put together a professional services agreement to include the construction phase of the project. Construction phase includes construction observation, construction survey staking, construction administration, which would be documentation of quantities, pay vouchers, and so forth. And then, this would just cover that, that part of those services. In your packet is a, is the proposal from WSB and Associates, the estimated fees for construction services are estimated at $89,801, and this is a, not to exceed without prior approval from the city. Reason to put that statement in the proposal is that if something happens that is not under our control, under the contractor's control, or under the city's control, that we would consider, you know, either reducing the amount of construction observation that occurs, or trying to reduce the fees that are spent on that while still providing sufficient engineering construction on the project. There is a resolution in your packet that would approve the professional services agreement, and this includes Enchanted Lane and Tuxedo Road, and also the Grandview Avenue improvements. The fees are at $89,000, what did I just say?
$801.
$801, sorry, I didn't have my glasses, so I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the screen.
And that is a not to exceed cost.
And that is not to exceed. And with those fees, it does keep the project within the opinion of project costs for the feasibility report, and those costs were $876,300 is what was estimated in the feasibility report, and with the construction bid amount and the indirect cost to date, it looks like without the shoreline protection, that would be $815,000, and we still fall within that budgeted amount.
Okay. Okay. Any questions?
I do have one question. Did we have the shoreline restoration component budgeted, or do we have a dollar figure associated with that?
I think we had like $70,000 estimate.
It was about $72,000 or $76,000, I was just kinda looking at what that estimate was.
So, when we look at the overall cost as it stands, and if we took that 75 out of the budget, because we're not doing it, we're actually really close, is that correct, or am I not?
Yes, we're getting close, yeah.
Okay, all right.
I have a question. How, how often does WSB raise their, the costs that they charge out for the different categories of people that they apply to these projects?
Standard practice for consulting firms is to provide annual rates to cities, and we do that as, you know, I've worked, this is eighth place I've worked in my third years of working in every consulting firm I've worked for, we've done that around the first year, we provide rate schedules to the city.
So we have a rate schedule from January through December?
Mm-hmm.
And those rates are the same, they've been the same all year? Because I noticed there was a 5% increase in the project engineer cost, and I also noticed, the last time I objected to their rates being high, their clerical category was called clerical, now it's called office technician, with a raise, and they're charging more for that, that person, so I'm just wondering.
So we, so our rate schedule does provide a range of rates, and so what we do is for the people we're using and proposing to use on the project, their rate might be slightly different than what you might've seen on another proposal, because I don't necessarily use the same people for the same, for every single project. So for instance, this project to help, number one, get it done in time, and then also to help with the budget was done in another office, under my direction, so we have this one done by another staff, not that people typically do that, and we should be right within budget. The, so you may see individual rates identified differently, but they're all within that range for that particular person with the rate schedule.
So a project engineer could vary by how much?
I don't know, I can't tell you the range right now, off the top of my head.
So a project engineer, one might bill out?
One might be $72, one might be $90.
And what is that based on?
And the, it's based on their experience.
Okay.
So you're just using different people on this than on what we saw before?
So what ends up happening, let's say you want me to use somebody with a lower rate, I can do that, the cost is probably gonna be about the same or more, because that person's gonna spend more time on it.
No, I just wanted to understand.
That's what ends up, that's what ends up happening, it's not, I'm not trying to pull the wool over anybody's eyes.
I'm not complying.
All these rates are specific to the rate schedule that was approved by the city, or provided to the city for 2017.
Paul, I would imagine that sometimes you use different people, not only because of experience, but they might have specialty in a field.
Specialty or availability as well.
I was gonna say availability as well, yeah.
For instance, I have a technician that bills out almost as much as a project manager, but that particular technician can get work done in a third of the time as a more costless experienced technician. So oftentimes, you'll see that higher rate, but fewer hours on that particular person's, and also depends on their availability, so I have to look at that and scheduling people as well. And that's, and that is typical of all consulting firms.
Okay, good questions. Any other questions or comments? Otherwise, we're looking for a motion to accept professional service agreement for Enchanted Lane, Tuxedo Road, and Grandview Avenue for the construction engineering services with WSB.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Ms. Mortenson made the motion, and Mr. Maliter made the second. Further questions? Comments? Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes 4-0. Next, providing for the sales of $3.25 million in general obligation bonds, and this is for our street projects and equipment certificates.
Yeah, correct, Madam Mayor and Council, so Todd Hagan with Ellers is before us tonight, and he's gonna explain this item, as well as, there's a couple after it, and it's got a couple of refunding refinancings, which I think is good news, too, or, so I'll let take it away from him, he's basically just gonna explain sort of the process as far as the, the bonds, and when this is the pre-sale report, and then the final sale of the bonds in conjunction with our Halsted and Tuxedo and Enchanted projects that we've just approved the bids here on at the last couple meetings here, so.
Thank you, Brian, staff, council members, Mayor, thanks for having me again. I was here in July, kinda laying the groundwork for these three bond issues. There's similarities basically in schedules, and all three, we're looking at September 18th to come back to the council with bids, we're gonna competitively bid the bond issues, they're all three general obligation bonds, with nuances to each one. So the first one, the Series A bonds, you have a pre-sale report in front of you. We do also show a graph in each one of these pre-sale reports, it shows a 30-year trend in interest rates, and they're a little better than when I was here in July, so hopefully continue with that trend. We don't have a crystal ball, and I'm not quite sure what the market's gonna do, but it's been trending, and a good area for the borrower, so, which is you folks. So the first bond issue has a few parts to it, it's a 2017A general obligation bond, preliminarily in the amount of $3.25 million, and as Brian said, it finances the construction of the Halsted Drive and Enchanted and Tuxedo Lane improvements, so we're reimbursing the Halsted, because that's moving along, brand-new Enchanted and Tuxedo Lane improvements, and then also, it's gonna finance some capital equipment. Brand new Enchanted and Tuxedo Lane improvements and also it's going to finance some capital equipment. And so we did get with Paul and Brian and staff to make sure we had the Enchanted Road, Tuxedo correctly stated here as far as the amount is concerned. Grandview is out because it's a cash financed project. The shoreline issues, that's not in there either. The equipment went down a little bit from some of what we've been figuring throughout, seems like six to eight months. So we were hovering around the three point two five million. And to remember too, that Halsted Drive has about a million and three of municipal state aid or NSA dollars to kind of bring this bond issue down. So it's a three point four million dollar project, but two point one six million as far as that particular portion of bonds is concerned. Again, Enchanted and Tuxedo, this amount is about eight hundred and forty thousand. And the equipment is about two hundred and fifty thousand, so that equates to three point two five million. So it's a twenty-year bond. You know, we're going to levy assessments and taxes this year for pay. Start paying in twenty eighteen. Did work with staff, finance department too, to make sure that after the assessments come in, that, that the levy is around about fifty-five thousand dollars each for the equipment and then to improvement projects. And then we'll kind of ease the levy up a little bit higher as, as the years go on here too. So we're able to do that with the market, we can finance and it's not just straight principal and interest starting and stopping wherever somebody tells us to do that. So we are kind of working within the financial management plan to kind of graduate that up to help with the tax impact as well. So this is how you normally sell your general obligation bonds, through the competitive bid process. We're also going to go to standard quarters and get that bond rating again. Hopefully we stay at the double A plus. Not looking for any upgrades or downgrades, just like to stay the same if we can. So that will be, you know, before the bond sale, before September eighteenth. We get on the phone with staff a few weeks ahead of time and go through a conversation with the analysts out of Chicago and get that on the docket. So we'll come back with what that rating is also. We'll see that in my report on September eighteen.
Well, we'd love if they'd be, we'd be triple A, but we, we're not quite there yet, right? A little bigger city.
I love it. I would think we need to get our fund balances up a little bit just because they have that cash, you know? And it's probably one of the only things that we hold from the triple A, not the analyst way, I suspect.
But you don't anticipate it going down?
No, I don't anticipate it going down. Right, Brian?
I don't think so, no.
So this, so then we're also, so that, you've got a resolution in front of council for action on that as well. And I could certainly go to the other ones right now too and you could, questions and answers of all three.
Well, let's, let's do one, one thing at a time so that we kind of keep it all in order. Mr. Beatty, do you need to weigh in on any of this? Have we met all of the timelines and requirements and all of that?
I think so.
Okay. I hope you know so.
Maybe just the one clarification, we did talk about in their work session. The, the two street projects are twenty-year bonds. The equipment certificate will be the five-year piece, so that'll be paid back in, in five, five years. So that piece will drop off after that, that term and then they'll just be the other.
But they would get the same interest rate or would they have different interest rates?
We'll be bonded under one, so it's easy for the bidder to just look at one bond issue. But that will equate into a lower interest rate. As a matter of fact, you know, the estimated rate on the five-year bond is, will be under, we're hoping under two percent, something like that. So it's a short.
The equipment certificate, yeah.
And it's much more efficient to sell this as one bond issue. You know, that would be more costly and would probably be sold to a local bank in the area too. So we always try to strategize to see if we can fit it into a larger bond issue, tuck it in here and get sold in the market.
But it will have a separate interest rate is what you're saying?
It's part of the one bond issue, but for, for internal purposes, it is going to be kind of what is a separate, a separate purpose. And it can have a separate interest rate. If you look at, we do have it isolated is what I'm saying. It's within this twenty-year bond and we have carved out, you know, there's a separate interest rate for it.
Well, the three projects right now are estimating a little under a three percent interest rate right now.
For the twenty years. So as long, the longer you roll with the bond issue, you know, your interest rates ascend. You know, they're fixed, but they just are low and typically they get a little bit higher. And so, so the average of all twenty years is obviously higher than a little five year one at the beginning.
And then is this one also callable? I mean, can we refinance it at any time? Or is there a timeframe that you have to wait?
Yeah, this one we're going to, won't see any problem with having a callable starting in 2026 for 2027 and after. So an eight or nine year call, which is typical.
So it has to stay at, we can't refinance it within eight or nine years?
You can, but it takes some kind of escrow refinancing if we want to do that. It's a little bit more costly, but if you want it, it won't be efficient refunding you, wait till 2026.
Okay, and because the interest rates are low, we would want to kind of not do that. I mean.
Good, good point. You may not be refinancing for an interest cost savings. It kind of depends how this gets bid too. So, you know, there may be an advantage down the line to do that. Yep, so that's a good question as well. And you know, that hopefully will attract more bidders, you know, we've got that lockout period. So they just know, investors know that they've got these bonds for a while. So that should bring that interest rate down.
Okay.
Good question.
Couple of questions actually. I think this is probably more for Brian. First question, we, in our work session, we were talking about the equipment trust certificates that we have. So this actually is not an equipment trust certificate. We're doing this as a general obligation. Is that a fair statement?
Well, I think it's a, it's a GO bond, but it has the street improvement bond component and then the equipment certificate component. Is that right?
Whereas the previous ones just were standalone equipment certificates.
We've done standalone, but I think our 2015 one was standalone. But our 2016 one, I think we actually did when we did the Water Main project along with the water treatment plant. So then we tried to for economies of scale, do at the same time.
Then my second question is for this two hundred and fifty thousand, is this, so we're not refunding, we're not refinancing any existing equipment certificates. This is funding.
The 2017 capital improvement plan purchases.
Okay, which.
We just waited to issue it with these other ones for some economies of scale.
Okay, sure. So to the extent that we've already spent some of those two hundred and fifty thousand, which I believe we have, this, the fund, the proceeds from this just kind of reimburse the funds?
Yeah, we sort of spent down the fund balance to a pretty low level and then this will put it back in. So we have.
All right.
Maybe one thing to add too is the city's already received the one point three million from state aid for the street per Halsted Drive.
For the street, yeah. But Mr. Maliter is talking about the certificates. Also another reason to have a healthy fund balance.
Right. That was my, kind of my point about the timing is that if you were truly debt financing this, you would have had to do this in the first part of the year to have the money to spend.
Correct.
We've already spent them, we're just reimbursing the fund, got you.
Yeah, if you have a luxury, because you have a fund balance. Other cities would be chit-chit on the way at this little by little, it'd be very inefficient.
And this actually saves us money. And that's what we did in 2015 with the Water Main.
Twenty sixteen.
Twenty sixteen with Water Main project bonding, so. Okay. Good question. Any other questions? Otherwise, we can take this one first and then go on to the next. And this is, we, resolution to approve the sale of three two five, three million two hundred and fifty thousand general obligation bonds for the street projects and equipment certificate for 2017.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, a motion has been made by Ms. Mortensen and seconded by Mr. Maliter. Any other questions? Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye. Aye. All those opposed, motion passes for all. Okay, so now we'll move on to the sale of the general obligation improvement refunding bonds. We might want to do those, we could do those together maybe?
Sure.
Okay.
So we did look at the outstanding indebtedness of the city like we always do and we talked about this last month a little bit, about the 2013 A and 2013 B bonds that are out there. Callable on any date, may produce the savings when combined with what we normally get, right, the prepaid special assessments received by the developers. So a lot of the times, well, every year or so, we actually just call bonds with cash. We can do that anytime. That was the idea to kind of get the debt down as, as we get special assessments. And because, you know, it's really hard to get that same interest rate once we get the cash in the bank. So we get kind of a negative return on cash flow. So we really basically prepaid as many bonds as we can when we get that. But because interest rates are pretty low right now and we look at actually refinancing, issuing new bonds to replace the old bonds. So it's kind of both prepaid special assessments and just lower interest rate bonds.
So these would have lower interest rates?
Right.
Okay.
So we've got a series B and a series C bond. And of course, these bonds finance the roundabout and the Kings Point Road projects that are associated with that Woodland Cove development. So they were, again, prepayable on any date. And so we're looking at that right now too, just to even see if, you know, if it's, if it's possible to actually get some bidders out there that don't mind us taking some bonds away again at any time. So it's, seems like maybe a difficult process. We may not get as many bonds as the A bonds do because that's got that lockout period. So I guess I'm expecting less, less bids. And then I also sort of wondered what the market would be out there for putting out a couple of bonds that can be callable at any time. We did luckily, just before I get into reports, we sold some bonds from Medina last Tuesday and they were also callable on any, any date. They were about half the size of each one of these and they went out two years longer. And so it's kind of neat to see, you know, what, what happened because I was, I was curious myself, you know? Because this doesn't happen every day, those types of bonds out in the market. So Medina has a lease rating equivalent to your S and P rating, so it sort of matches up pretty well. And they, the rates that they got on Tuesday were about three basis points less than our projections like in July when we looked at this. So that was encouraging as well on the tax exempt side. So the taxable's still, you know, a little out there as, as kind of a question mark. So, you know, at this point, the only penalty, if you want to call it that, that I can see out there for a callable on any date bond is just getting less, less bids. They got their best bid from Northland Securities. And then United Bankers Bank out of Bloomington went in on that and Farmer State Bank out of Hamel did too. So, and their other bid was from UMB Bank out of Kansas City, Missouri, and Baird out of Milwaukee would have bid because it's callable on any, any date. And those two bids are really tight. So there's no bone being thrown out there just to see. So I'm pretty confident that we'll get a couple of bids on these and they'll be very respective rates. And it's a good time to do them right now too with the money bond issue, the A's too, because of the credit rating. You'll capture the economies of scale on that too. These just won't be standalone as yet. Hope they work. We'll get, we'll get a break on underrated. It'll be prorated and stuff too, so it'll be a lot less expensive too. They would be the only folks that would get paid on this if they didn't work. Kenny and Greg will hold off. We would, you know, we'd charge. And I think it's just a good time to take a look at this and see.
And Todd, my recollection was that the Medina bonds were at two point three.
Yep, two point three, yep.
Interest rate?
Yes.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, and they went out three years longer than this too, so.
Okay, but now question, would these bonds have to run longer than the current one?
No.
No.
Twenty twenty-nine.
Twenty twenty-nine and they can be called at any time?
Yep.
Okay. And two percent, two point three?
He's just giving you an illustration of what very recent bond issue, very comparable to this one was. And, you know, as he said, Medina faced that issue that when it's callable at any time, you're likely to pay a premium and you're like, which, you know, we may or may not, you're likely to get fewer bidders. I think there were only two bidders on the Medina.
Except if indicators show that interest rates are going to go up. And so they know that and they're going to say, hey, this, they're probably not going to call it, you know?
Nobody was complaining about the two point.
No, I don't think so, right.
That was a good bond sale.
Yeah. So your report said that your estimated savings for the city over, if it goes all the way to 2029, is a hundred and twenty thousand?
About a hundred and thirty-eight, present value, I mean, future value.
Yeah.
So on both of them, believe it or not. So, you know, you're looking at, looking at the savings or two eighty or so for both of them.
Okay.
Yeah, miraculously, it sort of kind of looks like they're ending up at the same place. Now, the taxable bonds will have a higher interest rate, we know that.
Okay.
They did at the beginning too, right, the first ones did. So the savings will be proportionate in that respect. So it's a twelve-year term left over, a B bond and I think a thirteen-year, you know, a thirteen-year term on the C bond left over. Again, we're just keeping everything the same. We're just locking one bond out for a, for a less expensive one. And that's, that's the theme here, so.
And the original one was a callable at any time as well, so, all right.
That was requested by the developer at the time because they were footed on the hundred percent of the roundabout and the vast majority of the Kings Point Road, so.
Yeah, and we want to make sure it's callable at any time in case they pay it off, so, all right. All right, sounds good.
One question. Did you say part of this is taxable?
The C bond is taxable. It's taxable at the beginning and it's, the first bond issue, it's still taxable.
Why is that taxable?
It's federal law. Ron can chime in on this a little bit. It's, it's, if I remember, some of that was because we weren't assessing everybody along that route.
One of the rules about assessment, well, there are a whole bunch of rules you have to follow. We talked a little bit ago about the four twenty-nine bonds being the twenty percent. One of the other rules is that you have to assess all benefited properties. In other words, you can't favor some and not others. The Kings Point Road situation was a large developer going in on the east side of the road and willing to pay everything for the road. And the folks on the west side getting a free ride, not being assessed. And one of the consequences or the prices of that is that you could not sell tax exempt debt. Now, in this case, it didn't really matter because all the assessments were being picked up by the developer. But that's often the reason you have to sell taxable four twenty-nine bonds when you don't assess everybody who's eligible for assessment.
Did we run into that issue? Because we were just talking about that in the work session about taking some people off, you know?
No, that's not the same situation. I mean, what, you know, this situation again is you had a single developer who, you know, it was, it was single loaded. In other words, only the property on the east side of Kings Point Road was going to be assessed when property on the west side was similarly going to be benefited. But for political and other reasons, the council chose not to assess them. And the consequence is you have to sell taxable debt.
Any other questions? So.
Yeah, so there's resolutions here too, a couple of them. The B bond and C bond, let's get Ellers and Associates started on, sell these bonds for it, packaging them up and coming back for bids on September eighteenth as well.
Would those be with the bid results or whatever, or?
Yep, bid results.
Okay. So we have two. One is providing the sale of two million eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars in general obligation improvement refunding bonds, series 2017 B, which is refunding, refinancing the 2013 A bonds and providing for the sale of two million three hundred and ninety thousand dollar taxable general obligation refunding bonds, series 2017 C, refunding or refinancing of 2013 B bonds. Are there any questions? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion has been made by Ms. Mortensen and seconded by Ms. Bruce. Any other questions or comments? I think it's good that we could potentially hopefully save over two hundred thousand dollars. That's great. All those in favor signify with aye. Aye. All those opposed? All those opposed? Motion passes for all. So we're looking forward to those low interest rates.
Okay.
Exciting.
Keep thinking low, keep thinking.
All right, thank you. So next, we move on to declaring costs to be assessed and ordering preparation of proposed assessments and ordering the hearing on these proposed assessments. We talked, had a little brief discussion in our work session, so, let's see, who's Ms. Hornby?
Mayor, members of the council. In your packet is a council memo and resolution that would declare the cost to be assessed, ordering the preparation of the proposed assessments, and ordering the hearing on the proposed assessments for the Halsted Drive Street Improvement Project, that's City Project 01-16, and that starts on page 132 of your packet. The Halsted Drive Improvement Project is partially funded by municipal state aid and also improvement bonds, supported in part by special assessments. The special assessments to benefiting property owners are for a portion of the street and drainage improvements. Halsted Drive is an aggregate surface roadway, as we all know, and the, on the city's MSA system. And the improvements would be to provide in part of the tubular surface and improve drainage with improved subway down the roadway. The city's existing assessment policy states the benefiting property owners be assessed for 50% of the total street and storm sewer improvement costs, and that we talked about a little bit in the work session. Due in this area because of the density and the wide variation in the size of the parcels, you know, one unit rate was identified in the feasibility report for properties adjacent to, on Halsted Drive, and a lesser rate for those who have only access to Halsted Drive. Those improvements are at about 31% of the, excuse me, those assessments are about 31% of the improvements rather than 50%, and that's consistent with the feasibility report. The city is required to assess at least 20% of the city's net cost of the improvement project. The feasibility report and the preliminary assessment adopted included 54 parcels benefiting properties be assessed, $11,114 on Farm Hill Drive, and $14,819 on Halsted Drive. The assessable amounts recommended be $718,696.96. The assessments would be levied for 20-year period at an interest rate 2% greater than the interest rate on the associated bonds issued as per the city's assessment policy. So as an example in the memo, if it's, if the bonding interest rate is around 3%, that would result in an assessment interest rate of above 5%. For fiscal impacts, the Halsted Drive Improvement Project is estimated to cost $3,460,000 and is pro, and is proposed to be funded by combination state aid funds, which is $1,302,800. The city's already received those funds. An improvement bond supported in part by the special assessments, and the amount of the improvement bond is proposed to be $2,160,000 for Halsted Drive improvements. Staff does recommend adopting the resolution, declaring the cost to be assessed, ordering the preparation of the proposed assessment, and calling for the hearing on the proposed assessments. The hearing date would be by resolution, September 18th, 2017. Notice will be placed in the official publication tomorrow morning to meet the deadline, and then the notice to each benefiting property owner will be sent out, and we're planning by Friday this week, mainly because of the holiday coming up. We wanted to get that out sooner than later. And then in the work session, the council did identify a desire to remove two parcels from the assessment roll. One would be parcel 23 owned by Avens as a, is a unbuildable parcel, and then parcel number 54, and this is, these parcel numbers are from the feasibility report, her last name is Ewald. Ewalds in that parcel 54 were assessed under the Highland Road project, and there's a desire for the, by the council to, by policy, take them off of the assessment for Halsted Drive. The council could direct staff to remove those and add that language to the resolution that's before you tonight.
Any questions? Just one, so we're talking, we have some numbers here in the packet. Those dollar amounts we could discuss at the public hearing and make adjustments if need be. But we can't up it, but we can lower it.
You're talking as far as like the, the assessment, the unit, the 11,000, 114 in Farm Hill and 14,819 on Halsted?
Yeah, because the other reason I'm asking is we did talk about another, a third property in potentially assessing only a portion or partial assessment. So I want to make sure that if we send these dollar amounts out, that we still have some discretion in terms of the amount.
Yes, they're, they're like the preliminary levy that you talked about earlier. They're the maximum amount. You can always go down from that at the assessment hearing.
Okay, all right.
Maybe just one other comment I want to make, and probably will come up at the public hearing, is the roughly 30, 31% of the bond that's being assessed, when you actually add in the state aid, it comes down to about 20%. Just so people along the route realize, basically, they're paying about 20% of the total project, about 30-ish percent of the bondable cost of the project.
So any other questions? And we don't need to identify any other parcels then?
No, I think, I mean, I think you've been clear that your staff is not going to send the notice to the two parcels that Paul identified. All, everybody else will get the notice, and you'll have a public hearing five, or in September 18th.
Right. Okay, I just want to make one caveat, if you will. Just want to double check to make sure that the Ewald property was indeed assessed for Highland Road. I believe they were, and that's what we've been told. But can you just before, and we could say tonight, we anticipate removing them, but could you just double check? I want to dot our i's and cross our t's. If they were assessed, then they would be taken out? And if they indeed were not, then we would leave them in?
You want to be very clear for the reasons that we talked about before, you can't add them back in.
Right, right. And I do know our engineer did take a look at the Avens property.
Yes, we did.
So just double check the Ewald property. I'm fairly certain they did pay. We just want to double check.
I think we checked that, but we'll take another look.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and does that need to be part of the resolution?
No, I, you're just adopting the resolution that's in the packet. The other stuff that we've been talking about are basically the message to the staff as to who is going to get a copy of the mailed notice.
Okay, all right. All right. Does anybody want to make a motion declaring the cost to be assessed and ordering the preparation of the proposed assessments and ordering the hearing for September, the public hearing for the assessments for Halsted Drive and Farm Hill Halsted Drive for September 18th?
Some moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any other questions? Discussion, comments? Hearing none? All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed? Motion passes for all. So now we're moving on to other items. And Ms. Tabor, you are with us this evening. It's a conditional offer of employment for a new public works maintenance worker.
Correct, yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Before you is a request for approval of the conditional offer of employment for Mr. Carter Ostley. If you recall, at our last meeting, we accepted the resignation of Adam Heggaholes. He's pursuing a different career line in human resources with another organization. As you recall as well, we've had a difficult time attracting public works candidates. So back in September, we began a process on September 29th to hire our, it wasn't our last, but a couple, a couple of employees ago, to hire an employee. We received seven applications after extending the deadline two times, so it's been difficult for us to bring people in. At that point, we did four interviews, and we hired Glenn Ring, who's been with us since the first of the year. At that time, Carter Ostley was a very strong candidate as well, second to Glenn Ring, and we asked him if he was interested in staying an active candidate for the next six months from that point, to allow for any additional hiring opportunities if they should arise, because it is just so costly for us to go through these processes over and over again. That was something that he expressed interest in. When Adam announced his resignation, we went back and had a conversation, another interview with Carter as a potential candidate. So included is a summary of his job history, education, and training. He has an associate's degree. He comes with a background with mapping software. It's not the same mapping software that we use, but there's some good transferable skills there. He does have a Class A CDL, which is what we currently look for in a candidate. We don't require an A, but we like to see people get their A by the end of the first year. He also has a tanker endorsement, which is really important to us. He has commercial pesticide application licensure, it's not required in this position, but it does carry over into some of the work that we do in our ditches. He has 11 years of private sector experience as a machine operator. He has extensive experience with large machine operation, including dump trucks, excavators, skid loaders, skid loaders and dozers. So again, things that we use consistently. He has expertise in trenching, digging, and drain tiling. He has had OSHA safety training, which is a nice boost for us. Oftentimes, we see candidates who come to us who haven't had that formal training, so that's nice. He has four years of snowplow experience, which is good. We do send all of our staff to snowplow training every year, and he'll see that this fall if he's approved for this position. And he has experience with computer programs, alarm monitoring, handheld locator devices as well. So he brings a good set of transferable skills to the city, which I think will set him up to be successful rather immediately with us. And so the personnel committee recommends approval of a conditional offer of employment for Mr. Carter Ostley as a public works maintenance worker. He would come in at a step one, which is our first step, and if approved, his expected start date would be in the next couple of weeks.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Any questions for staff?
I don't have any questions. I just have to do one comment. I do want to thank you for putting in the summary of job history and giving us a little more information, to the extent that we can do that, and I much appreciate that. Thank you.
Sure, and I'll continue to use this similar formatting, so I appreciate that.
Great, thank you. One correction here. It says perform four initial interviews on November 16th, 2017. Obviously, that should be 2016.
Oh, thank you.
I first read that, I'm like, how do we do the interview?
It takes us a year and a half there.
All right.
Thank you.
Yeah, actually, we're very fortunate that we had this gentleman kind of in the, in the shadows or in the?
Bullpen.
Bullpen, there you go.
On the bench.
Okay, in the bullpen, because like Ms. Tabor said, it has, it's difficult to get not qualified, not public works applications, but qualified public works applicants, so. All right, so the personnel committee is recommending approval of the conditional offer of employment and looking for a motion as such.
Some moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, a motion has been made and seconded to offer employment to Mr. Carter Ostley as a public works maintenance worker with the city of Minatrista. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed? Motion passes. So next, we're moving on to the Gail property adjacent to City Hall. This was a request by Mr. Bowles, who currently farms it, who is, Ms. Tabor, okay?
Correct. So currently, Mr. John Bowles leases 16.3 acres of farmland adjacent to the city. He has come to the staff as, with a request to install drain tile. He would like to do this to increase, obviously, his farmability of the land. Right now, we receive a minimal rental fee, which is about 16, well, it is 1,600 a year. We just went out for bid for that. Mr. Bowles attached a map. He attached, I attached his request as well, so that you can see that. He stated that he would do this work at his expense, and he would do the legwork with the county to get this approved. I did discuss this, obviously, with Paul to see what his thoughts were on this as well. Attached is Sean Williams' response. I won't even attempt to pretend that I can interpret that for you, so if you have questions on that, we'll default to Paul. Unfortunately, not being a farmer or an engineer, this was a big conversation to be had. So a couple of things that came up, just pros and cons. So the engineering input that we were provided by WSB does state that under the Minnesota Wetland Conservation Act, the land labeled type one or type two wetlands are eligible for an exemption and may be tiled, and we'd have to apply for an exemption. Those at the southwest and southeast portions of the property do not qualify and may not be drained without joint application and approved permits issued. We'd have to file an exemption for that. Tiling would allow for additional farmland within the 16.3 acre lease, and Mr. Bowles feels that would increase the value of the land, possibly increasing future leasing rates. A six-year agreement would limit our yearly bid work provided by the city staff. With that six years, he feels that's the time it would take for him to recoup his costs. It varies from year to year, what he gets back from a cost and a profit standpoint, so that's his estimate. He did state that if at any point in the future the city would want to or desire to get out of that lease early, then he would just look to be compensated proportionately for the work that he did that isn't covered by those years. So if we get out at the three-year mark, he'd look for 50% of those costs to be recouped. So this is the first time the city's been asked to install drain tile on this land. It would require contract work to be performed by the city attorney, as well as an additional, as well as additional engineering hours to visit the site, review the conditions. WSB said they would need to spend some time onsite with, with some other entities. So if, when the land would be used for another purpose, there would be a cost, or there may be a cost associated with cutting or removing the drain tile as well. So if approved, Mr. Bowles anticipates adding drain tile in the fall, or his latest spring, depending on the county's timeline. He did state to me that when he went into the county, because he started going through this approval process already, that they're estimating it may take upwards of six months for them to get to his request in the pile. So he said it may come earlier, but that's what they're estimating. He would agree to six years, beginning with the current lease year though, of 2017. And then the city staff just recommends that Mr. Bowles bear any associated engineering and legal costs as well. So I'm going to say I'll stand for questions, but I may need Mr. Hornby's help as well.
I think there's a lot more costs involved that Mr. Bowles maybe isn't figuring out because you have to do a wetland delineation, you have to identify whether it's a type one, type two, type three, type four wetland. And then for us to be co-applicants, I think that's also an issue. And then to be tied or locked into something for six years is a question, whether or not the council wants to do that, so. Comments, questions?
I guess my thoughts on this, to your points, perhaps it is, perhaps it isn't, but I don't see a risk to the city that, so that's on Mr. Bowles' nickel, if you will. I think if we were to proceed with this, I want to have, obviously, we have to rewrite the lease or extend the lease. We might do that in conjunction at the same time of allowing this. I'd also want to see a program, a schedule, you know, more formalized to say if it's over, what, five years? And if we terminate in year three, it'd be, you know, 60% or whatever. Just, I get what he's saying, but I think it'd be nice to actually have that in the schedule to say year X, Y, and Z, so that we don't have any disagreements over that.
Well, the thing is, though, it's not just reimbursing him for his costs, and we're talking more than just the tiling. We're also, he's probably then also going to, engineering costs and legal costs and application costs and so on. But then we also have to look at, what is it going to cost the city to remove the tiling? And then the other question I would have is, we've been leasing it out for, what, 10 years now to various farmers?
Roughly.
Yeah, it was in place when I got here in 2010. I don't know if you recall.
I'm going to say more.
Yeah, I'd say.
Yeah, I'd say 2010, because that's pretty close. We've just been renting it.
Since 2008.
Right. I mean, quite frankly, I think all around, for everybody's, and then, then we'd be tying it up for six years. And, you know, we've talked about using it for different things, maybe a dog park, maybe, you know, something else, to tie it up for six years without any expense to the city. And then, the question is, what do we have to do for the tiling? Do we remove it? Do we just cut it? I mean, and then, I guess the other question philosophically is, do we want to start draining our wetlands? I mean, whether they're Type 1, Type 2, or Type 3. I mean, that would be the other question. So, I'm just wondering if there might be another alternative. If he feels he needs more productive land in order to recoup more costs, maybe then his bid for next year should be lower. You know, that might be an alternative or something, versus having to put a lot of money into it. I don't know.
And I didn't discuss with him. When I met with him, my goal was just to hear him out and what his requests are, as he had kind of thought it out. So, it's not, I did not speak with him about costs regarding, legal costs regarding engineering, any of those things. So he may or may not be anticipating that as well, and that may make this something that's not financially feasible for him if he...
Yeah, I just, I wonder if he knows what all those costs are, if he'd still want to go forward. It's just the fact that he's looking at six years to recoup that cost.
Just the initial...
The additional cost on top of that might make it completely...
Right.
Just unfeasible.
And that was definitely a concern I had as well.
But I think it should be his decision, and once he knows what all those costs could be, I think he can make that determination.
Well, I think we also need to decide whether or not we want to tie it up for six years.
But I, I, I think he's, there isn't much risk to the city.
Not relatively speaking. I mean, we've put the, not every year we put this out for bid. Sometimes we do it one year, sometimes a two year, sometimes we just roll it over, you know, because there's limited interest in using this land. We just never had this request, and all the ramifications that go with it, whether it's legal, engineering, or whatever. So, the time it takes to put it in the paper, or whatever, but we did last time, you did.
It was very, very minimal.
Yeah, so it's not a lot of time that we do it. So to continue to do it on a yearly basis, maybe next year we write it for two years, I don't know. So we don't have to do it every year. So I don't think we're going to save a lot of time or money at staff level. Again, as Councilmember Bruce said, it's kind of him. I think if we would detail all the potential costs, it may or may not change his mind, I don't know. I don't think I would recommend him any longer of a term, you know, five, six years. It's essentially five years after this year. This year, you know, it'll be done in a couple of months, just like we all will with watching our grass grow or crops grow or whatever, so. So we certainly can pursue it, but we're just looking for direction. You want us to do it, if you don't want us to do it.
I would say that if we were to give him an idea of what all the added costs could be, he may change his mind. So I would put that all on his shoulders, and then if he says, yeah, he'd like to pursue it further, do I break it back? Because he might change his mind completely when those figures are all added in.
Let me just ask you a question, probably on his behalf.
Speak into the microphone, sorry.
Let's say he does do exactly that, and he comes back and says, yeah, I want to do it. Where would you stand then? Because I, my, my point to this is, I don't want to send him on a goose chase to stand and come back and say, well, I did everything you asked, I still want to do it, now you're saying no. I guess my question is, if he comes back and says, yeah, I still want to do it, would you, you going to pay for it with that?
Well, and it also could be negotiable, that if, if we take the land back within six years, that it's just the tiling costs that are recouped, and not the legal and not the other things. So, I think there's some room for negotiation in there, too, and...
I want to know how much that is, though, because this is a private enterprise. So, I mean, I, I don't necessarily oppose some of this, but I do have an issue with a private enterprise doing some work on city property, and then, if we need or want to use that property for something else, and say, now we need it, I would have an issue spending tax dollars on restoring it back to its original way.
Well, looking at his note, so it said it would take about $1,000 to $1,500, five-inch tile at roughly two bucks a square foot, two bucks a foot. So, that's $2,000 to $3,000. Divide that by five, so if it's $3,000, it's $600 a year, so, or less. So if he's there three years, at the end of three years, you say, hey, we're going to put a dog park in next year, sorry you're out, we got to pay him $1,200 bucks, $600 each for that.
And, and, right, and in that time, we've made $1,800.
Correct, but he's also made more money. He wouldn't be doing this if he wasn't going to make more money.
Of course. I'm sorry, I did the math wrong. We'd be making $4,800 to $600.
Which we would make anyway.
Potentially, yeah.
I mean, I, it, it doesn't matter. Whatever, but I think that Mr. Maliter's point is correct. Are you prepared to say yes, then if he comes back and says, yeah, he'll, he'll do it?
I just don't want to send him on a goose chase, just to have a say, oh, thanks for doing that work, but no. I mean, if we, if we really don't want to do it, then we should tell him now, just to be fair. If we're going to consider it, then we'll tell him that, and just with the caveats that we've mentioned, just to start him.
And I would not see refunding any of the soft costs.
Correct.
In other words, I, I, I mean, virtually everything I know about this, I've heard in the last 15 minutes, so I haven't given any thought to it, but you know it's going to be thousands of dollars in legal and engineering costs to do this. And if he hasn't heard that, I suspect that's going to be a surprise. So that, I would, I guess the way I'm drafting it in my head, is that if the city pulls the plug early, and there's some refunding of something, it's going to be this...
The tiling only.
Yes, not the, not the several thousand dollars worth of legal and engineering, which has had, will have been spent by that.
Well, can I also ask a question? So let's just say we go down that road, then what would it cost to restore the land or remove the tiling? See, that's, it's not just in reimbursing him for the tiling, but then it's also restoring it or removing the tiling.
Well, in my understanding, too, and Paul, please jump in and correct me if I'm incorrect, but not necessarily in all situations would it need to be removed? Is that my understanding?
That's, that's correct. Oftentimes, much like the Mater property, they didn't remove it, they just crushed it. And plugged the downstream in, so it wasn't, the drain tile wasn't removed in order to restore the...
There was no real cost to the city.
Okay, I just...
We could do the same thing as the Mater property.
Okay.
And, and just a little bit of background, too, that John shared with me. So his previous experience with this, as he's been leasing private land from private owners, is typically what happens, is he goes in 50/50 with them on this. So I think two of these are things that he has typically designed and implemented on his own, so I, I do think this cost aspect of it is going to be different than maybe what his past experience has been.
But when he goes in 50/50 with the landowner, then he probably also pays more in rent.
Sure.
You know?
Yeah, and that very well could be...
And we're not talking about increased rent, so.
Right, right. But just to give you some perspective on the fact that some of these other pieces may be newer to him. Okay.
What would you like us to do, Council?
I, I would say to give him an estimate of what it would cost, you know, with engineering and everything. And to be honest with you, I don't think we'd want to remove it for anything that we would have in mind. I mean, probably not. So, and all the costs, other than, you know, all the attorney fees, would not be reimbursable in his understanding of that. I don't see a problem with it, as long as he's paying all those other costs, which will probably be more, I think, he anticipates.
So Councilmember, you're saying, go ahead?
Yes.
Assuming he's willing to flip the dust.
Do you agree?
You guys know, that's Mr. Maliter said.
Right, that's why, yeah, I mean, if he comes back, right, he comes back and says, yeah, and then I just want to, it sounds...
That's fair.
Okay.
Okay, that gives us direction.
All right, thank you. All right, and next, we have the survey agreement with Morris Leatherman Company. So we have, last, last meeting, we approved authorizing staff to work with the Leatherman Company and come back with a contract. And we approved it up, not to exceed $20,000, and I think this came in less than that.
Correct. So Mayor, Council, I have before you tonight the resolution to approve the agreement with Morris Leatherman, as promised at the last meeting. As the mayor just stated, it came in at, as we expected, $19,000, less than $20,000. Didn't think it was going to go up, but I wanted to have that, didn't have to come back or change the number, or whatever you want to call it, when you come back for something like this. And as you know, you know, we heard the presentation with Peter, that what's in the payment of claims that you've already approved is the $9,500 to downstroke, and then we pay the remainder at the end of the survey, once it's completed and accepted, so. So the motion that I recommend for you tonight is to approve the agreement with Morris Leatherman for the 2017 community survey with a down payment of $9,500 or 50% to begin the survey.
Okay.
Now, stand for any questions.
Any questions for staff?
I, Mr. Brony circulated a memo that I, I sent to him about carrier, carriers and how they identify spam, and Mr. Leatherman's response to that, after, after he spoke to him, said that they don't make their calls out from a single trunk, that they use separate telephone lines, so that they're not identified as spam. But what Mr. Leatherman doesn't understand is carriers identify a telephone number, and if that telephone number is making calls to numbers that it doesn't normally make calls to, that is a trigger for a spam identification and a classification.
Well, then a lot of us would get spammed.
And, but, but that's a trigger that, that takes it into a category, a low category of spam. A higher category of spam is if they, that telephone number, doesn't have to be a trunk, but that telephone number starts getting multiple hangups in a row. That classifies it as a higher likelihood of spam. There are different classifications of spam that carriers are tagging telephone numbers with. And this is a very recent technology. A lot of these carriers, T-Mobile, AT&amp;T, Verizon, started doing this in March this year, in 2017. And my concern is that these calls are just not going to be answered by people, especially people with cell phones that have, and these are free, I'm sorry, Verizon charges $299 a month for their service, T-Mobile and, what's the other one?
Verizon charges how much?
$299 a month.
$299.
No, $2 and 99 a month. T-Mobile and AT&amp;T, it's free. And I, I suspect that the FCC is going to require Verizon to make it free, because I just anticipate they will. But knowing that, I have some real concerns about the validity of the survey and the people that they're going to reach, because my phone, every time, I, I would say at least 50% of the calls I get on my cellphone say likely spam or spam, and I don't answer them. So that's my concern with the survey, and that's, and I, I intend to vote no on the survey, because I just think it's not, it's, we're not going to get validated. We're not going to reach the people that are representative of our constituents in Minnetrista.
Okay, any other comments or questions? So we've already approved going forward with the survey. We've authorized staff to come back with the contract not to exceed $19,000. So this is basically just approving the contract.
I think one important thing is to communicate that they may be getting these calls.
Yep.
And I think that'll be key. I would have absolutely no, and no one in my family would have a problem answering these questions at all.
And I think we're going to make, we're going to have to make a big effort at letting people know that the survey is going to happen, and they may get a call, so we'll, yeah.
So we, if approved, we would do a press release tomorrow, actually, our deadline for that is tomorrow, so we'd get that set up for tomorrow, and go on Facebook, website, we'd go out through Twitter, letting people know what to expect, who's calling, why they're calling, the benefit of answering, so that, so that we're putting that messaging strategy...
Do we want to send out a postcard, letting people know that we're doing this? I mean, it wouldn't cost that much.
I, I think it's not worth it, Mayor.
I mean, we can ask the Leatherman, too, if they get a...
Yeah, I spoke with Peter about this issue, so if they do not reach somebody, they leave a voicemail, so they would not get repeated calls from them. They love the voicemail, so.
Okay.
Most people check their voicemail, and if it's legit, they'll call back.
Okay.
I mean, that's, that's how they couch it, they tell who they are and why they're calling, so that's the purpose of the voicemail, so.
Okay. Okay, any comments, Mr. Maliter?
All I can say is, I understand the concern. Nothing's perfect, and I think we're trying to, to make it as good as we can, and I'm okay with that.
Okay, so I'm looking for a resolution to approve the city community survey agreement with the Morris Leatherman Company.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, a motion has been made by Ms. Mortensen and seconded by Mr. Maliter. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye. Aye, all those opposed?
No.
Motion passes three to one. Ms. Bruce is dissenting. And next, we have accepting our quotes and award contract for the Westwood Drive drainage improvements. I was out there, and I saw the other one that we did, that is functioning very well, and it looks great. It really looks nice, so.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. Previously, the city did do an improvement between Westwood Drive and Lake Minnetonka. That was Westwood Drive Drainage Improvement, Segments 1 through 3. The quotes that we received tonight are for Segment 4. Segment 4 is between County Road 110 North and Westwood Drive. It's not as eroded as the Segments 1 through 3 were, but it is, got a start, and I think it's, the timing is really good to provide a low amount of dollars relatively compared to the other one, to make the repairs, and to also have a maintenance agreement or maintenance easement over the top of this channel, which has already been dedicated by the owner. Mayor, thank you for the comments on the 1 through 3 segment. I've been down, down that area more than once this year. It did two things for the property owner, it actually made it look like a decorative landscape feature, and second of all, it functions and gets the water where it needs to go, and not showed any erosion along the channel. So I think that was very successful. We did go out for quotes, we did send quotes out to five specialty contractors for the Segment 4 channel restoration. We did receive three quotes back. The results are enclosed in the bid summary that's attached to your council packet, and this is on, starts on page 155 of your packet. Quotes ranged in price from $48,150 to $72,120. The engineer's estimate for construction cost is $58,290. The city's capital improvement plan has budgeted $75,000 for this improvement. Sunram Construction Incorporated, they're, they are the, they've provided the lowest quote, and they also are the construction company that constructed the previous channel, or reconstructed the previous channel. There is a resolution in your packet that will accept quotes and award the contract for the Westwood Drive Drainage Improvement, Segment 4, to Sunram Construction, for their low quote of $48,150, and staff recommends, if you choose to award this project, to award to that contractor.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
This has been one of those projects that's been long in progress.
Yes, it's been kind of ongoing for two and a half years at least, if not longer, if not longer, yeah. So this is good, and it looks, excited to see... So, this is good, and it looks, excited to see the, the dollar amount coming in significantly lower than anticipated, and that's good. And they are the ones that did the section one through, or phases one through three, so we kind, we know what they're like and how to work with and so on. And this would start when?
We work out a schedule, and the plan is to have this constructed by the end of this year. We actually, the previous one also, we actually let them work up almost until Christmas.
Okay.
And they did that because there was some work down toward the lake. They couldn't get equipment until the ground froze enough to do that. I don't anticipate that for this segment, but the timeframe is still there toward the end of this year.
Okay, all right. Any other questions?
I guess I was just wondering why the Blackstone bid was so high.
Well, I haven't, that is the first time we invited them. They may not be familiar with the work they did in the city. We wanted to work with them. We did get a good reference from them, from the Minnehaha Creek Watershed District. They do a lot of wetland restoration work in Hennepin County. And they did a nice job on the Mater property. We asked if they'd be interested in quoting, and they said yes. You know, might be based on the unfamiliarity with the city. Could be because of their current construction schedule, the cost, you know, how many, the personnel they would have to put on the project to get it done, the timeframe is... The lowest two quotas had, you know, those, those two are actually very close in price.
Okay. Yeah, they were less than a thousand dollars, or little over a thousand dollars apart. Okay. So, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, then do I have a res, do I have a motion to accept the quote and award the contract for the Westwood Drive Drainage Improvement Project to Sunram for, in the amount of forty-eight thousand one hundred and fifty dollars?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes for all. So, that concludes our business items, and we can move on to our administrative items. Staff reports, city administrator?
Uh, yes, Mayor, Council, I have three short items to share with you. One, you sort of did with emails and short conversations tonight is to find a date for the water treatment dedication. Surprisingly, all council members are able to go to either date, so I will get back to you as to which date it will be. The dates were Thursday, the seventh of September, or Tuesday, the twelfth of September. Like I said, I'll contact both SEH Canute's and the, uh, construction firm and the engineering firm that worked on that, and we'll get, I'll get back to you with an email and let you know when it is. It'll be at ten thirty AM on whichever date we end up selecting. Also, in your info packet, just a reminder, Riconia Schools has a couple of dedications for their new schools. Monday, they have the, have five kids.
This evening.
Yeah, I'm sorry, we missed that one. No, it's a week from tonight, August twenty-eighth, five...
I thought it was, oh, okay, I'm sorry.
And August twenty-ninth, the following Tuesday morning for the middle school. So, if you want to attend, you certainly can. And then finally, this is a bit of good news. As you recall, we, we hired Chad Bartley to be our building inspector. And Chad's been working, before he even started here, on trying to become a certified building official. On August sixteenth, he found out that he passed his exam, so he's now a state Minnesota certified building official. He met all the requirements that the Department of Labor Industry say you have to meet. He passed the state exam. What this does for us is this helps us with, be a little bit more flexible. We now have two people that actually qualify as building officials. In addition to Chad, obviously, Jesse, our building official. So, it's good for Chad and his, ultimately, his future career, whether that's here as a building official or somewhere else. But congratulations to Chad for a nice accomplishment there. And that's all I have.
All right, any other staff reports?
I told him he can't leave, so, but...
He can't leave? I was just gonna say, oh, good, now he's gonna go off.
He doesn't have much experience as a building official, so, less than a week.
All right. Let's see, so we'll move on to council reports. Ms. Bruce?
Yeah, the Pioneer Sarah Creek canceled their meeting, so I didn't go to that. I went to the St. Bonnie Fire Meeting, and they approved their prelim, their preliminary budget. It's going to City Council next. And it was a really tiny increase in the budget. I think it was, I can't remember the number exactly, but it was like half a percent. So, very small. And I also attended the Minnehaha Watershed District's master plan meeting at Minnetonka just to get educated on their, they, we, we sent a letter of support for all the CIP projects, and it was just a chance to get an overview of those and to understand the, the work that went into that. So, I was impressed with the work that they did, and it was a good meeting.
Good. Just kind of FYI, too, I know last time we reported on the mound fire, and that was a three point oh five percent increase.
Right.
I double-checked on that. You had said five, and I, so...
And it was...
Yeah, three point oh five, and I think...
Minnetonka's increase was five percent.
I think it was three point seven four, yeah.
I think the overall, all cities combined was the three point oh five.
Okay.
Which is what the mayor said.
Right.
I figured ours was slightly under.
Yeah, three point seven four, I believe it is.
It's on the mayor's number.
Yep. Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Malater?
Um, just reporting, I'm a LMCD. There was another application for liquor license, paddle tap. I'm not sure if you're familiar with them. They'll be adding a third vote, so that was approved. And that was all of it.
Okay.
Uh, I attended the WCC meeting on the tenth, and it was at Lady of the Lake. And good news, their enrollment is growing, so they did struggle for a while.
Yes, right.
Two years ago, so they are doing very well. Dog Days was last weekend, and I didn't go, I was out of town, but I'm sure it was successful. And I am going to the planning commission meeting next Monday.
Okay, great. I attended the Gillespie Board Meeting last week, and other than that, it's been pretty quiet. Usually, August is pretty quiet, so it's the only one I attended. With that, concludes our meeting agenda, and if we have a motion to approve, we can go home.
So moved.
Okay, motion has been made to adjourn, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Mal, Ms. Mortensen made that motion, and Mr. Malater seconded. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes for all.